Did you listen to when you came in?
Not that I noticed, but.
Can you hear us Tina?
Hello?
Voila.
I can't see y'all.
You don't need to see us.
Well, I do need to see you so I know who's talking.
It ain't happening.
Why? Okie doke, Carter joke.
Why would you have to put her on?
Finger nail into the.
Are you sure? I don't think it will. She can mute herself, can't she?
Yes, I can mute myself. I don't want anybody else muting me.
Ready? I'll call this meeting to order. We'd all please stand and have Fabian Munoz lead us in a word of prayer, please.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just want to thank you for our help and giving us another day and please guide us in our decision making and please bring us more rain, sir, because you know we need it and in your name we pray amen.
And Julie, just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under your government, invisible, liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the state symbol of perfect friendships among the united cultures.
First up is approval agenda, approval of the agenda. Uh, I'd like to make the motion to amend the agenda to move the probate judge to after the approval of the minutes. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Chair Criswell?
Yes.
Since I'm online, you need to go ahead and announce that I'm online and you'll have to ask for my vote on each thing so that it's on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Chair.
You're okay. And yes, by the way, I approved the agenda.
I thought I heard you say aye. So. Anyway, approval of the minutes. Motion has been made.
Second.
Second has been made. Ms. Chair Tina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right. Kendall.
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for having me. As you know, the state statutes say that I have to give two reports of my probate activities for the, for the county. So this is our mid-year probate report. So I've done sixty, sixteen actual probates and I've done forty plus inquiries. And what that means is a lot of times they'll want to probate it, but maybe they're from another county or there's something that I have to send it to district court and I can't. So I can meet with them, talk to them, give them, give them those statutes, but I can't actually do the probate. So we're at sixteen forty plus. And that's what we've done thus far. And then secondly, I want to announce that we're going to be having another legal resource for the elderly legal workshop. And that is going to be on June the 10th, which is a Tuesday at the Jake Lopez building at seven oh five East Lime Street. And the state, you know, hires attorneys. So this attorney is going to come from Roswell and we're going to put on another legal workshop. We'll discuss probate. When you have to probate, when you don't have to probate, we'll discuss wheels, we'll discuss trust. Anything that pertains to probate. It's an informative educational workshop that we have every year. And so now we're going to have one at the Jake Lopez building on June the 10th. So mark your calendars. If you want to learn about probate, there'll be a, there'll be a attorney there. And that attorney can answer questions and give legal advice. As the probate judge, I can just tell you what the statutes, I can't give legal advice. So that's June 10th.
Kendall, you said that's for the elderly. Is that open for everybody?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And then thirdly, I would like to ask permission to put two signs up, one at this corner of the courthouse grounds and one at this corner of the courthouse. And just like a four by four sign that is on a tripod that says we're going to have a legal workshop on June the 10th. I'll put sandbags down maybe from the county road department. And that would just get us some more advertising, probably about a week before the workshop. It's a little four by four sign on the two corners. Traffic going this way and then traffic going this way, just to tell them about the legal work. If I could get the approval of the commission to that as well.
Looking to the elder commission. Never dealt with this, sir. And I'll second that.
It's not.
Do we have to approve it or well?
It's not an agenda item, so you can't take a vote, but you can.
I'm okay with that.
You can allow your judge to do as he.
Chair, Chair, Ms. Dixon, how do you, what do you think?
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I'll see you in December with the final or maybe January with our final tallies of what we've done for probate this year. And if y'all can attend the workshop, I think it's very educational. Thank you, guys.
Thank you and safe travels.
Thanks.
Ms. Gentry.
It's not me, it's Lori Collins. She's now the chair of the home.
But.
Um, did y'all get the back sheet? That in your stuff?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Part of our deliverables for the grant that we get is that we present our fact sheet um, as we update it every year. And it's just kind of letting y'all know some of the things that our health council does. We are Roosevelt County Health Council, so we're proud to tell you all the good things that we've been doing with the money we've been awarded. And we've kind of shut us down, so we've been excited to have more activities this fiscal year. We do youth engagement. We have a maze of life that we do at junior high at the seventh graders at Patel's Junior High. And that's we had eight presenters of interactive presentations. And the importance of making healthy decisions. And the information about vaping, that nine eight eight call or text mental health line that kids could call or text if they're feeling depressed or suicidal. And we had a rethink your drink where we had sugary drinks and showing how much sugar is in the drink. And we had infused water to show them healthier ways that we could drink water and make it taste good. The sheriffs were there with the drunk goggles and a poster of to identify drugs. And Arise was there talking about healthy relationships. And pregnancy resource with they're talking about the cost of having a baby and just kind of what they might be in for that. And we had a pig's lung there to show and the damage that vaping can do. And so that was the maze of life. We've been doing the school gardens and this week we've been doing harvesting. Actually, this morning we harvested the gardens. We have it's a raised gardens at James Elementary and then we have container gardens at Brown. And next year, Head Start also wants to start some container garden. It's very interesting to see the little ones. They get to plant. We did radishes, lettuce and spinach. And tomorrow we'll have a tasting where they can taste what they grew. It's a lot of kids didn't even realize that they could grow their own food, I think. And so it's been really fun doing that, learn about healthy eating, trying new foods and where it comes from. And we partner, we have a lot of community partners, a lot of the things we want to do is educate and let people, we're rural communities, so we don't have, our healthcare is limited. We have to a lot of times go other places, but we do have a lot of good resources in our community and we try to make sure that we get that information out to everyone. We help with, help with money donations with United Way. There's a no worries wall at our Roosevelt County schools and that is hygiene products. And for anyone, it's for, there's no qualification. They can, if they need deodorant that day or they just forgot or that any kind of hygiene that supplied diaper, they do a diaper drive for the pregnancy resource center and fill the bus for school supplies. So we try to donate money there. And we also got an opioid overdose prevention grant this year. And that's mainly we did a train the trainer so we can provide Narcan training and Narcan. And we're doing a social media campaign about the stigma of overdose or opioid use. A lot of people won't seek treatment or help because of the stigma and they don't want to be categorized with somebody that uses drugs, but you know, there is help out there and we want to make sure that everyone knows that we have those resources available. And we're involved in the minister alliance and they pay utilities and sometimes provide a hotel room for those having an emergency or needing help in the community. It's a very good program. You'll see us out there ringing the bell for the red pedal. And we also donate money. Karen Powers and Debbie put together a walking opportunities pamphlet for some of the walking trails we have here in Roosevelt County. We also donated and participated in the Alzheimer's walk. Last year it was at the mall in Curry County. We plan and organize the health fair for Roosevelt County Peanut Festival. This past year we had seventy-five flu shots given. This year, the, for the first time, we had what a growing up healthy early uh, childhood and baby health expo. It was our first time. We had a lot of good resources for new moms and families. We had about fifty participate first participants. We held it at the Jake Lopez building. Thank you for letting us use that. We participated in the community night out partnering with the DWI program. We also do a lot with our unhoused population. There's a pit point in time account that we do in January, which is that day we go out and we try to count how many homeless we have in our community. And then those numbers are relayed to HUD for our Roosevelt County. So they make sure that the funding in Roosevelt County is good. We did make some unhoused care packs with some beef jerky and some snacks and water and a pair of socks. That's one of the things that the community showers has said is requested. And also we help with our peril, actually volunteers in our name at the community showers. On Mondays at the Catholic church, anyone can go take a shower. All the supplies are provided. We have and I think they've been pretty busy, like you said, a dozen, maybe every Monday and it's nine to twelve. We try to get that word out. Some people aren't necessarily unhoused. Maybe they just don't have running water at their house. And other various health fairs, the heritage days, we're looking forward to dog days. The peanut festival, anything that we can find that we can be out and giving information, Department of Health and Public Health Office have a lot of services that we try to get out. And we did host UNM core state injury prevention program where we discussed uproot the root causes of some of the issues in our community. We had a great turnout. Johnny Montel did the barbecue for us and it was very good event. Um, we do vaping prevention education at the junior high once a week. Well, it's a four week course. With the kids that get caught vaping and so the junior high has asked us to come in and provide some education on that. And we partnered with the DWI program for the arrival live, which was simulated. Driving situation, drunk, drugged or distracted driving. And we were able to go to Elida and they Floyd came over on a bus for one day and Patelis High School for another day. And then Carol actually helps us get our five oh one C three uh, this last year. And so we've been very excited that we can pursue more brands. And we're just really happy to be here in Roosevelt County and want you to know that we're available. And if you have any information, especially like Kendall workshop, we can get that out too. And we want to, we're just really proud to be part of Roosevelt County. And thank you for letting us present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. I want to apologize for my phone ringing right there. Um. Do you have any questions or anything?
We do have an extensive detail list to send out anything that you could want out in the public.
Ms. Chair, are you good? Any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right. Let's move on to public request. Uh, public request to be for information only. No action can be taken. All public comments will follow the two thousand twenty-five oh two public participation resolution and it's limited to three minutes. Does anybody have any requests?
Good evening, commissioners, and I am Darla Reed. I'm not here as the DWI coordinator at the moment. I'm representing the Roosevelt County Home Extension Clubs. And we just wanted to come back and report to you some things that we're doing, you know, that, that um, you have a very active group in Roosevelt County. Meredith Eaton was going to speak with you tonight. She is our district chair. I'm just the county chair, but she's a very busy person and has five babies. I think she didn't need to be out tonight. So the paper that I shared with you, it's not very exciting to look at, but it's just pretty basic. We're District Four is Roosevelt and Curry County. The majority of the district is comprised of five different clubs in Roosevelt County. I believe they have three in Curry County. So anyway, this is just a little matrix with the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four data that we try to share. How many service hours that our um, people put in and the top one, the service hours are programs taught to us and sometimes we ourselves are the instructors. The second set are service hours related to extension, any meetings, any activities that we do, trainings. The third one is service hours that we might do for crime stoppers or other types of community service. Health council, that type of thing. And then some dollar figures that we contribute to the county. So that's just a little bit there. The last thing I'd talk about, we had a hundred and seven entries in a district cultural arts recently. Ninety-nine of those were Roosevelt County. We have the state E and M East Extension Association of New Mexico State President, Raina Howard currently. And we have the district chair is Meredith Eaton for District Four. We also have the five clubs with an excess of sixty-six active members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peyton.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. Uh, I'm Peyton Terry. I'm the vice president of the Little Wranglers Rodeo Association. Um, we've been having, and all three of this is Jared Eschman and Cam Knight. Jared would be our president and Cam's just a member for us. Uh, we're, we're here on a couple of different reasons. First reason for me or for us that we would like to see if we could possibly get the county uh, indoor arena at the fairgrounds maybe donated by the commission. Uh, we are a nonprofit organization. Uh, we do all this volunteer donations from the county, the community, everything. And this association is being on, going on since nineteen sixty-six. Um, it's nonprofit. One of the biggest expenses we have is the building to rent it for two days a weekend. Um, with price of cattle this year, our stock contract went up significantly amount this year. So we're going to see if y'all would possibly consider maybe donating it or maybe discounting the rent fee per weekend. Maybe we buy one day and y'all donate a day, something like that. So I know y'all can't make a decision on that tonight, but we'd like for y'all to consider that and see what y'all could do on behalf of Little Wranglers. And I'll let Jared go.
Yes, I'm Jared Eschman and I'm the president of Little Wranglers. And I wanted to bring a few things to y'all's attention, maybe some safety issues at the arena and my kids have been doing the Little Wranglers for five years now and uh, these are some issues that every year just keep popping up. And so the main issue out there that I see uh, and I'm going to do things out of the arena. Cam's going to talk about things inside the arena, but is a warm-up area. So there is nowhere out there to warm horses up. Uh, we had a hundred and twenty-five members last year and there's little kids going everywhere out there, horseback. Uh, so that was a big concern like in, inside the arena, there's a little lane. And that's where everybody tries to warm up and it is a cluster. I mean, there's kids running into each other. It's just there's nowhere good to warm up horses. And last year we asked about opening the outdoor arena where we could warm up in the outdoor arena. And they said for us to do that, we would have to rent the outdoor arena as well to be able to open it for us to warm up in the outdoor arena. Uh, so we weren't able to do that. And then another big issue we have is, is our speed events coming out of the arena. So the roll-up door in the south end is where the speed events come out and there's two gates right there. And they run coming out of there into them double gates right there. And every year we have horses run straight into them gates. We've had kids hurt, horses fall down. Uh, so there's not a good way coming in and out of the arena. What I would propose that Mike could help both situations is on the south end, there's a little round pin right there where people kind of warm up a little bit. And that's where we come in and out into the arena with the speed events. Maybe taking that round pin up and opening that bigger. Uh, there's, you got all that room plumbed to the chain link fence. You could, you'd have to haul some dirt in there. You might have to haul three or four more loads of dirt in there and then putting like a lane where the courses, speed event horses can go down a lane into the arena and out of the arena. We'd put a gate out there and you could just do that with panels. But I think, I think this would also be more attractive for people to rent that facility if we could resolve a few of these these issues like that. That's, that's my two main concerns on some things that could be improved there to make things more attractive and, and safety, safety mainly for the kids. Cause every year we have we have those concerns arising. So that's, that's what I would propose.
Uh, thank you commissioners for having us this evening. Um, as Jared said, my name is Cam Knight. I'm going to kind of speak about safety issues inside the arena and some things we need to do. Um, commissioners have worked very hard with us to get the ground right and safe for those kids and we appreciate that. Um, another thought on that is if we get that maintainer in and dig that ground up. If, I don't know if you guys have any sand anywhere or anything that we could mix in with that clay to kind of keep it from packing so much at some point, maybe in the future, it might be a good option. Uh, so the ground is one is probably the major issue with even Little Wranglers or any other association renting that facility. Um, as Jared stated, an alley would be ideal for any barrel racing producers to rent that facility. Anytime you have a barrel race where you have an alley to run in and out, it's much more appealing to them just for safety and getting those horses stopped, especially with kids. It, it gives them a narrow lane so they can't bolt. The other concern, not really a concern, but we need to make a plan is for stalls. When we originally questioned about it, it was, uh, the county wanted to take care of it. Which is, we are fine either way, but that entails somebody being there Friday night and possibly Saturday night to have stalls unlocked, collect money, things like that. Or we can take care of it and then bring you guys the money on Monday. If you don't want to have an employee there to take care of the stalls. We could even look at things. If you did want to donate the arena, we could take care of the stalls and still give you all the money. If you guys aren't able to donate the arena, we can take care of the stalls and split the money on the stalls. Just several options. We've done that in many facilities where we take care of it and split it, bring you guys the money Monday morning. Or like I said, we can take care of all of it and give you all the money if we want to work out something on the arena. Just some options to think about. If at all possible.
No, no, Mr. Vice Chair, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but during this section, but you're talking about the stalls that we already have existing, correct?
Yes, to rent them out for each event. Yes. They just have to be unlocked and have somebody there to.
They don't work on Saturdays. So a lot of people come Sunday, Saturday morning and then they'll show up if they need stalls for that night because they're a two-day event. Somebody's got to be there to unlock them. Um, they got to pay somebody.
Yeah. Or people come in Friday night that are traveling from far away since it starts in the morning. Yeah, they'll be there at eleven or twelve at night when they get in and so.
I'm with, um, Manager Annette Kirk. When they rent the facilities, are they renting the whole facility or just partials? How does that, how does that work? Is I thought if they rented the fairgrounds, they rented like both arena, like both, they rented like both arenas and you know, and they would rent the stalls too. You know, they had the stalls too.
The four hundred dollars that they're paying is just for per day for the one arena.
Just for the one arena?
Just for the one day.
And how much is it for the whole, for the?
Entire playgrounds?
Yeah.
I believe it's sixteen hundred, fifteen or sixteen hundred a day.
That does not include stalls.
Does not include stalls, does not include the RV hookups. Those are. Does not include stalls, does not include the RV hookups, those are twenty five dollars each a day. And we cannot donate.
I didn't ask about donation, I didn't ask that.
But I was gonna discuss stalls as well in my report.
Okay, like I said, I was just, I was just wondering about the, the rent, I, I thought when they rented. They had it all, you know, they had the whole thing, so that's the reason why I was asking.
And I eventually want to discuss that with commission as well on different facilities at the fairgrounds. At a later date.
And I would too, I would like to get that on the next agenda. To discuss the rentals and stuff for the. Fairgrounds for the next agenda.
And I do believe we were, I had asked Mayland to put us on the next agenda, just. Where we can do that, because we also just need to discuss and figure out the tractor drivers and things like that. Just things we need to have nailed down before the first event on June seventh and eighth. We can have those discussions without. They're welcome to come up and have those discussions in my office without having to come to commission. However, if you want to be on the agenda, we can also get you the form so you can put your specific request, okay?
Yeah, I just, let's put it on the next agenda for. Discuss this.
We also don't have.
Do we need to?
Until June tenth though.
What's that?
We don't have another meeting until June.
Right, so, yeah, that's.
No, I, we usually pay for all of them at once, and I usually just write a check for all of them, is what I usually do. But, I mean, ninety percent of our kids that go to this are all local probably, so.
Within fifty, sixty miles or here.
But it is getting bigger and so we're getting people from Canyon, Lubbock, places like that, so.
We're expecting a bigger year this year, just the price of cattle and stuff and people and it should be bigger this year. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. If you would, please state your name, please.
I'm Jaclyn Cruz and I am a balephilethorical instructor. And I have been doing dance since I was five years old and so. This is one of my passions and so what I've given you is just a little sample of what I've been doing at the junior high and the high school. And so we have, I've taught over sixteen, twenty, sixteen plus dances. Right now I have fifteen dancers from the high school who want to join me in my own personal group. I'm gonna start a nonprofit organization so that. Not only do the students that are in my group are ready, but to incorporate like the public more. Children that are not the junior high age, so many people have shown interest in dance. And so I want to open it up to the little kids and the adults. My cousin ran a program for thirty plus years in Roswell and grew it tremendously, it was amazing. And so I'd like to do something like that here in Portalis and open it up to everyone possible. I would, my hopes is to run it like the Little League, how they have. A small fee for the students to participate, just so that more kids could be active and be involved. It helps like grow that confidence. These kids love to perform, they get that dress on, they start hearing that music, they start moving, they love it. It goes back to like teaching them their culture, their traditions. And it's open to any student, anyone who wants to dance. So what my question is to you all is. Being a nonprofit organization, because I want to keep the prices of participation low. I would like to see if I would be able to use any of the facilities that the city has. Jake Lopez or the Memorial something and just to keep the cost for myself down so that I'm able to keep the cost for the children down. I know we've used, I've coached many years, all my children and we've used Jake Lopez for basketball, we've. Held all kinds of events there and so I'd like to ask if that is something that we can possibly do. Another thing is we, being nonprofit, I would like to do like fundraising with the students as well. And have them go and dance for grandma's birthday for like twenty bucks. That would give them a little bit money to help them raise money for their own costumes. Right now I have my own collection that the kids will use, just so that they are not having to buy their own costumes. I want to keep it as low as possible cost for families, just, I just want to see these kids. Participate and be active, get them doing something.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
My name is Angie Smith. Good evening, county commissioners, thank you for allowing all of us to time to come and speak to you this evening. I'm actually here because of a statewide coalition meeting I was in here in just the last couple of weeks. And in this meeting, it was brought up about a regulation that the New Mexico Environment Department is trying to push through. It's E I B twenty five dash eleven, proposed new regulation eleven point five point seven N M A C heat illness and injury. Prevention, so essentially trying to break this down in the amount of time that I have, what they are hoping to do is. They are setting parameters for employers, any employer that has an employee that works outside, even inside that gets very hot. So say for instance, your electricians that are up in the rafters and that sort of thing and it gets very hot up there. They are talking about once it gets to eighty degrees heat index, that all of these regulations get kicked in and it's at the. On the back of the employer. And in fact, even in things like training, they're gonna require that the employers make sure they do all of these trainings and heat exposure assessments every day and all of that has to be on the dollar of. The employer, the state's not gonna pay for anything, they're just gonna make sure that you do this. And so when you get looking into this, what is very concerning is like, I'll just read through this, I mean, this is long. But it says heat illness, they have to come up with a heat illness and injury prevention plan, the employers do, and a heat exposure assessment. They have to follow the control measures such as acclimatization methods, excuse me, provision of fluids, regular rest breaks, cooling areas. Personnel monitoring, emergency medical care and training and record keeping, all of this is on. The responsibility of the employer, again, the state's not gonna help them with this, they're just gonna expect them to do it. Now, when I read this, I wrote at the top of it, personal trial injury, personal injury trial lawyers dream. This is what personal injury lawyers look for. So worst case scenario, you have an employee that gets sick possibly from the heat, a personal injury lawyer finds out about it, they're gonna be knocking on their door, I guarantee it. And then when they start asking them things like, well, hey, let's take a look at these heat related injuries. Did you slip, did you trip or fall while you were experiencing this heat, well, you know what, maybe I think I did, I think I did. Well, that's against the law, so now we not only have employers having to take care of all of these regulations, pay for all of these regulations. They could also be facing a hefty lawsuit from a personal trial injury lawyer that finds out about it, now. Nobody wants employees to be mistreated, nobody, my husband works out in the heat for the electric co-op. I am very concerned about him being taken care of, but I also know his employer made sure when he used to be out in the field all the time. He had a huge five gallon water cooler full of ice, they provided the ice machine, they provided the water and he had it with him at all times. Made sure he had salt tablets, I made sure he covered himself in the sun, sun lotion, I know, I'm sure the boss did too, but mom, but, but wife did it, mom. But wife did it for sure, so we have employers that'll take care of their employees. So the last thing is, is that we're looking at one of the most egregious things. Is that when it gets up to ninety eight degrees, that employees will have to work thirty five minutes, this is for heavy work. Thirty five minutes and rest for twenty five minutes every hour and be paid for the full hour. So I, and then at a hundred and five, I saw you commissioner, I'm sorry, at a hundred and five. They have to work fifteen minutes and have a break for forty five minutes and be paid for the full hour. That's gonna crush employers in a state that's already struggling with small businesses, why are we doing this to our employees? One I'm asking the county commission is use anything that you can. First of all, they are taking public comment at the, at the environment department until May thirtieth. Call them or, or write them, get on the email, tell them what you feel about it, tell your constituents, call the legislators. If the legislators start getting a lot of phone calls, people, they will call the New Mexico Environment Department and say, hey, I'm getting a lot of calls on this, this is not a good idea. We should not be pursuing this, give them every ammo that we need and then just spread the word with one another. I am trying to share it with as many people as I possibly can, I know we have a Facebook page, anything like that that you can post it to, to let people know what's going on. And then that we can rise up and say, no, this is, this isn't gonna work, because if nobody says anything, I can guarantee you it'll go through. But if people do rise up and get upset about it, we have a chance, thank you.
All right, let's move on. Elected officials.
See if I could talk as long as Peyton and Angie. And, and Lori. Actually, I'm not gonna talk as long as all of them, I, I have one thing just to share and I don't know. Oh, the marriage license fee increase takes effect on June twentieth. So at the June tenth meeting, we need to review. The resolution that sets the fees for things. I'll work with Tyler on the backend to get it split the way it's supposed to be, twenty dollars to the clerk's office. Twenty dollars to the children's trust fund and fifteen dollars to the county's general fund. But currently it says twenty five dollars in our fee schedule, so we just need to make that update at the next. Meeting and we might as well update any other fees while we are. Amending that resolution or it'll actually be a new resolution, but we'll bring it next month. I think that was it for the clerk's office unless you have any questions.
Any questions now? Chair?
Well. No, sir.
Okay, we'll also set the polling locations at the June meeting and the board of registration at the June meeting.
All right. Did you get your? Your people?
I have some.
Her people that we were supposed to give to her?
I have a list to bring, you'll just have to say yes or no.
Okay, all right.
But the ones that have been suggested, they'll, they'll either say yes or no and I'll either bring their name or I won't.
Okay, all right, thank you. H R, Ms. Mary.
Just wanted to let you know where we stood on finance, looking for someone for finance, we have already interviewed four people. Three of which were very good, we've narrowed it down to two and we're going to start second interviews tomorrow. Hopefully have someone chosen, the problem is, is that neither of these people can start till mid to late June. So that, that will be a hiccup that we have, but I think we can get through it. We need three people at detention center and then we'll be fully staffed once again.
Questions? Chair?
No, sir.
Let's move on to the manager.
So first I wanna. Take the time to recognize. I know Ramsey did this last time, but I didn't get through with some of the proclamations that were recognized in the prior years, but. May fourth through tenth was National Correctional Officer Week, National Police Week was May. Eleventh through the seventeenth, National Peace Officers Day was May fifteenth. Firefighters Day was May fourth and Emergency Medical Services Week was May eighteenth through the twenty fourth. And I just want to take the time to recognize all those people that do so much for our county. Also, I want to share with y'all that I have visited with maintenance and, and the road department. Regarding the arena and I have authorized overtime for the roads to go in on Friday with the maintainer. To go in and do some deep braking, so if one of you commissioners would like to go out there and meet with them to see, to kind of help them with that process. This will be kind of an ongoing process as we have various. Events going on throughout the summer. But this is just one of other steps that we plan on trying to take that when I feel like it will benefit. Roads, it will also help benefit maintenance. Especially since we only have two guys to maintain the entire facilities. So that's kind of the direction I'm taking right now with that, okay? So, let's see, I have a few ideas on some things that I'd like to eventually address with the fairgrounds on some of the other buildings. And since we're gonna add that at a later date, I'd like to set with a couple of y'all maybe on the, before we bring that to the agenda. So we can look at those items. Different buildings, there's some things we need to look at on those buildings as far as making those more user friendly as well for other people.
Since you brought that up, what about the pavilion, all, did all the work get done?
We're not done and let's have a talk about that at a later date.
So how later are you wanting to talk about it, maybe the next meeting?
Come visit with me tomorrow.
You know.
Just as Cam suggested, I had called her about the stalls because she wanted to know about renting the stalls. Renting the stalls this year is going to be a new venture for us, looking at what we need to do. Stalls and RV, we don't have the ability to take funds right now online. Through our website for those specific items, I think we need to look into that. So looking at our alternative ways to. See how can we make this easier for the different programs or, or different places. It's, again, I've got two guys that do maintenance. Calling them up every time somebody wants a stall unlocked isn't going to be ideal. Because you're gonna have people show up at different times, but we can't leave all the stalls unlocked either. So I'm open for lots of suggestions, I know Cam had suggested one of the items being. There's a stall reserve app, maybe, maybe that's something we look into. But again, we need to look at different items, this again is a very new endeavor for us.
Bringing that up, I would like to make a suggestion, and this is just, I'm gonna throw this out there, my opinion, I should say. I would like to see us make a change, if we're gonna rent out the. The arena, I think the stalls should go with it. As far as handling the stalls. I think. That we need to figure out something. That either the stalls are thrown in with the building. And they take care of the rent. Or we find a person to take, to take the money, to do that, and so my suggestion would be. Like for Little Wranglers especially, let them handle the stall part with that arena, let them handle that. And then they can take care of the funding off the stalls. And if they want to place that funding towards the rental of the arena, that'd be fine for the Little Wranglers deal. As far as these other bigger events, maybe we need to figure out some way to somebody. Pay them a little overtime to stay out there to collect the money for the rent, for the stalls, if we're gonna have them to rent out. If we're not gonna have anybody to man the stall deal to take the money, then we should throw the stalls in with the building and they get the both facilities. And that's just my opinion. So.
Okay, and then one of the other things we'll need to address is the tractor and then the tractor driver. Since it is a liability issue. We've discussed it. So we'll need to further those discussions as to how we plan on, I know, I believe one of the meetings that we had. Kendall Terry said that he would drive the tractors, that's what he's done, I don't know if that's gonna continue. Commissioner Chriswell, I was told that you had even volunteered to drive the tractor.
I would, I'd say I can't if I can, if I'm around, yes.
But I, I don't know. But I, I don't know, I mean, at this point, it does have to be a county employee to drive our equipment. So we need to address those situations, what's going to be fair. Not only to the organization, but more importantly, it would be fair to the person that is going to show up to handle the tractor driving.
Yes, we keep talking about addressing this, but it never gets addressed. We've been talking about addressing this for three months now, but it hasn't been addressed yet. We, I mean, the events are upon us now, so, I mean, Mr. Van Fleck, is there some type of waiver or something that we can do? Absolving us liabilities, some, I, I understand, I, I know all the legal issues surrounding it, but we need, we need a solution to this. Besides paying an employee or relying on a commissioner to show up for every rodeo event to drive this tractor.
You can, you can write those agreements, Commissioner, but they're not worth the paper they're written on. Really, for us to be totally protected and protected in the best way, to have our employee do it, be covered by our insurance.
And I get that, but I guess what I'm asking is, can you advise us on a way to make this work?
Well, you know.
Can we contract employee, uh, I mean, that's like the people that are running the rodeos, can we contract with them to do, to be able to operate that piece of equipment or something to that effect? I think we need to think outside of box here to make this work.
I understand, I mean, the whole, the whole, the basic problem is, you know, we're committing a lot of county resources in support of a nonprofit. Which is something that we simply can't do. And we have to be very careful when we walk down that line as far as that, because you know, it's a very visible donation of not only arena, but equipment and personnel. And those are the types of things that, that, that the attorney general and others noticed when you start making donations in that.
I'm not asking to make a donation either. What I'm asking is to support our youth in our community as best we can without donating. I mean, we all understand we have to charge a fee for this. But we also wanna, we don't have much to do for our youth in this, in this area. Rodeo is a huge thing for a lot of.
I guess I don't understand, I don't know the layout. I've never been to the arena, so I don't know what we're talking about, what we're talking about renting out the stalls and why they can't be locked and why they can't be unlocked. I don't understand the logistics enough to give you a, an informed decision of what we can do. I mean, as far as, as far as that's concerned. I, I, I'd like Commissioner Chriswell's suggestion that if you rent the arena, you rent the stalls and maybe you take, maybe then the organization takes responsibility for opening up the stalls and closing the stalls. You know, but then the rent would have to be commensurate with, you know, taking both the stalls and the arena. And we could certainly structure something like that. As far as, as far as the, having someone out there with a, with a piece of equipment maintaining the arena, that's, that's a dicier, that's a dicier issue for me. Because your equipment can be damaged, the arena can be damaged, you know, people can be hurt. Uh, we need to, we need to think about how, how often that's gonna be needed to be done, what's gonna be need to be done? What equipment needs to be used, you know, who's gonna be doing it? All of those things we can, you know, if I had a little better understanding of what was going on, I might be able to give you some out of the box suggestions.
Love setting time for tour with you.
I'd love to.
I do agree with Mr. Parker. Commissioner Parker on, we gotta get this solved, resolved. Like I say, time is of issue, is of essence. We're here. I'd like to get it solved. Cause we're two weeks out.
So, Mr. Van Fleck, how much longer are you saying overtime? I'm standing tight.
We do have lights out there. There is a carnival, fellow, we can go out there this evening, so. Anyway, and go through there, but I, like I say, I think this is something we need to get resolved and we need, I'd like to get it resolved tonight if we can. Cause like I said, we've been wanting to talk about it, cause you know, that's, I'd like to. And getting it done are two different things, so anyway, Chair Tina, have you got anything about this?
I do, um. So my questions were the same that I had written down on the tractor driver and I don't know what we need to do. But I agree with y'all, it's something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. We've kicked this can down the road far enough and we need to get this addressed because we need to utilize these fairgrounds. As far as the, as far as the pens, I wouldn't know whether we would use the stalls if somebody has the, if we do it like you said, which I agree with you. But at the same time, if they rent the arena, they automatically get the stalls. Well, what if two different groups rent the arenas, one rents outdoor and one rents indoor, who gets the stalls? So we would run into that, but I think we need to just do like a blanket thing maybe on the stalls or something, but we didn't build the stalls just to sit there. So we did, we do need to utilize those and we need to make it to where it's more user friendly out there. And we need to get this figured out. And as far as the donation, um, Mr. Van Fleck, so on that, I know we have an anti-donation clause. And so we can do, I know government to government, I'm certain we can probably do nonprofits, maybe some, I don't know how it works with nonprofits. But I do know that we can do it government to government, but neither one of these are, are government. Can you even do a donation to a nonprofit from a government entity?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, certainly we can do government to government, but again, we don't have another government involved in this situation.
Right, but they're nonprofit, they're not government, that's what I'm asking, can we even do that?
Can we wait, I'm saying one more time?
So, where, according to the anti-donation clause, I didn't think we could do it to a nonprofit. I knew we could do it from government to government, but I didn't know.
You're, you're exactly right, we cannot do, we cannot make donations, loans, you know, uh, things of that nature to, to individuals or to nonprofits.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. And so we still have to go by the guidelines of it has.
We can do things, co-sponsor events, we can, you know, uh, we can you, you know, we can look at the rates we charge everyone, you know, and, you know, and maybe adjust those rates. But you know, we, we have to be mindful that, you know, these are taxpayer resources and, and even though you know, they're gonna go to support the youth of our community, they can't be used in that nature.
Right. Okay. That was my questions on those, so thank you very much. That's all I have on that.
I have, are you through Tina? I have something else, um.
I do too, you get to Commissioner comments and then I have some.
Okay, that's good, um. A little bit more about this. I was, I still would like to see both arenas and the stalls throwed in at that one cost for four hundred dollars. That way there's no revamping going on out there for another warm-up per se deal. And and if, if, if we need to charge so much per stall, that's fine. But at least give them the opportunity, if they wanna charge a hundred dollars a night per stall, that's fine. They can take that money and they can pay us what we need and then they can keep that money, the rest of it. But that's up to them. But I think, like I say, I think if they, if they come to us and they wanna rent the, the barn, they should get the stalls and the outside arena at both for this deal. And uh, and if we need to set a, a set price, I think the, you know, be the easiest thing to get, cause if we're gonna pay somebody to man just the stalls, we are defeating the purpose of even having them out there. If, cause we're going to have to man, it's gonna cost us more in a man to be stationed out there twenty-four hours for two days, manning the stalls. And I think that's just unreasonable for that right there. I don't know how y'all feel about that, but that's, that's also my opinion.
Forgive me, Commissioner, but if I heard you correctly, this is something I also have. We can't allow them to rent out county property and, and, you know, and take the money. You know, I mean.
Oh, so if they, if we, if we turn it over to them.
They can't rent it out.
To collect the money.
They can't turn it around and rent out that stall. They would have to give that stall to their people for free and charge their people a corresponding amount to register for the event. Does that make sense?
Well, that's kinda what I was saying.
Well, kinda, but I mean, we gotta make sure that they're, they're not renting out the stalls, they're renting out the facility. And, you know, they, they're charging their customers whatever entry fee it costs, so that they can cover their expense at the end of the day.
However, they need to do it.
Yeah, but so long as we're clear that they're not renting out county property. They're, they're renting out the entire arena and recovering their costs on registration fees from their people.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I do agree. All right, continue, I'm sorry.
Anybody else on the subject? Okay. Um, so Juan leaves tomorrow for Cerpto and Riedoso. Just let y'all would know, it's a meeting.
Oh, the Cerpto meeting.
Are you the Cerpto?
No, uh, I was, but Claudia was doing that, she's been writing in France and stuff, so after some discussion, Chairwoman Dixon, um, I just think she would be better suited for it, sorry, man.
Just wanted y'all to know that he'll be. No, no, this is where he's, um, so he's going to go as far as, because of, you know, for the grant that we've applied for. He's, so when they, it'll be about five, ten minutes for him to get up there and speak. But since we've received it three years in a row, more than likely, we probably won't also with the cuts. But at the same time, he's going up there to go give his, uh, why we should get this money. Spill. Um, also Johnny's at a conference in Albuquerque and he wanted me to make sure that y'all are all very much aware that the New Mexico State Forester has implemented fire restrictions effective noon today for Roosevelt County. And they just found out, so he wanted us to know it prohibits activities, the smoking, use of campfires, fireworks, prescribed or opened burning, gas flaring, retail to oil and gas production. And these restrictions will remain in effect until further notice. And then for final, it's the, uh. This is set by
Now, did you say the?
New Mexico State Forestry Division has implemented fire restrictions across the state.
Is that for national forests though?
New Mexico State Forestry Division.
I thought it was only for, excuse me, I thought it was only for, for certain counties.
It is, we are one of the counties.
Okay.
And final, I would like to set a special meeting for the approval of the initial budget to be uploaded. I mean, we've already, as you can see by your budget books, we've already got all of these pretty much um, set, but so we can have some final discussions now that you've got your book to go through, uh, within by the end of next week if something works for y'all, but definitely before the first.
I cannot do the twenty-ninth.
I'd just say twenty-eight.
I can do the thirtieth. No, no, I can't wait. Uh, yeah, I could probably do the twenty.
The thirtieth, I can do the thirtieth.
Yeah, thirtieth.
What's your favorite, Paul? Okay.
And then what time would y'all like, would y'all like prefer day? Okay. Nine?
After lunch.
Maybe seven, eight o'clock at nine AM.
I'm all about nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Miss Chairwoman? The thirtieth?
Yeah, it takes a minute to get this off of mute. Yeah, that's fine, nine AM is good.
Friday, May thirtieth at nine AM.
I will get that out for agenda.
Are you done? All right. All right, let's move to Commissioners. Ms. Chairwoman?
You want me to start?
Why not?
Okay, so, um, sorry, I'm not there, y'all. Um, when what Randall said a minute ago on that outdoor arena thing, um, on that last part, I understand what he's saying, I didn't know what y'all's thoughts were, but that when we, but they don't charge a fee. I don't know if Little Wranglers or any of those even charge a, a fee, do they, or do you know? For the registration? Pardon?
Ms. Knight is still here, if you wanna pose that question to her.
Do you guys even charge a registration fee?
Yeah, well, we have a, a membership.
Go to the mic, okay.
Um, we have a membership fee for all members, um, even non-members technically can compete, they're just not eligible for like awards and things. But we just charge a membership fee and then entry fees per rodeo or for the season.
Okay, cause I just didn't want it to be confused because I understand what we're at least trying to do because I would love to be able to do that. But also understand what the attorney's telling us that, you know, we can, you know, you cannot rent it out to them. If we give it to you for a set price, you can't turn around and charge for the stalls or gather the money, we have to be able to do that. We're not allowed to do that, so I just wanted to make sure that we all understood, so. But you're not gonna wanna raise your fees to be able to cover the, um, rental fees for the stalls or anything, are you or?
Well, we, we really can't at this point, um, memberships and like entry fees are have uh, must be postmarked by the twenty-third, so the, there's already several that are in. So it would be hard to change fees and it's not really feasible to put on a stall fee or however you wanna put it into the membership because a lot of our members are local and wouldn't be needing stalls. And more than Little Wranglers, this is something that needs to be addressed. If we wanna start renting, this is a great facility and we need to start renting it out to other associations and other programs, but we need to have some of these kinks worked out because they will rent out stalls, you know, if High Plains booked some rodeos here, we usually rent out a hundred stalls and would take every RV that you have. But we have to have a way to do that, whether a county employee wants to be out there to be there to open them, cause people come in at all hours when they're traveling to them, or if we take care of it, but we just need to figure out those kinks.
Okay, thank you. Um, so y'all, just, I agree that we need to do something, we need to work on this to make it more feasible, whether we partner like um, the attorney said, whether we partner with them and it's a that the county does, I mean, I don't know how we need to do it, but we need to make that where we, our fairground is utilized more. We do all this work out there for NADA and we gotta make it to where it works for the public because that's what it's there for. And so I would just like to see us get on that and get something done if at all possible. And I'll just leave it at that, let y'all carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul? Fabian?
I'm good.
Mr. Parker?
Well, I, I hate to beat a dead horse, but it's one of the things I campaigned on is using that fairgrounds more. I'm one hundred percent behind getting this open more of uh, being more user friendly for our rodeo events and I agree with what Mr. Van Fleck has said, what, what the net has, uh, put out and. we're in a special meeting ourselves to death, but I think at some point pretty quick, we need to do that. And sit down with maybe Cam and some of those folks and really just have a workshop and iron this out once and for all.
Okay.
But I'm really also tired of talking about it, really take some action here, so. Yes, ma'am.
Would you like for me to add that to the special meeting? Budget and arena?
Want to know if we want to add that after the question?
To the special meeting to after the.
It started at nine and ended at that night.
I'm already working.
That'd be great.
I would say add it to the, I, I, I'm all in favor of adding it to the budget meeting.
The special meeting for budget and.
And.
Meet.
Use.
Yes.
How about you, Tina? Madam Chair?
Most definitely.
You be here that day, Cam?
Beside the twenty ninth?
Thirty.
Friday morning.
And we'll be doing the budget meeting first, which is probably going to take till noon at least.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, yeah, um. Probably. Yeah, anytime after probably eleven I can hear. Yeah, just let me know what time you want me to be.
That's all I have, Mr. Pastor.
Well, uh. I want to, you agreed with the lawyer and I'm sorry, I probably should, but I don't. I think we can. I, 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 I just, uh, I'm going to agree to disagree. You know what I mean? And, uh, cause, uh, I think we can do some stuff and still make it work. I really do. And still keep it kosher. I really do. And I'm going to have faith in that. And so anyway, uh, like I say, I'm going to fight for that and, uh.
One clarification, Mr. Pastor, I agree with Mr. Ben Black and everything that he said. That doesn't mean that I don't want to change something. I want to see those stalls in that outdoor arena become part of the.
Yes, sir.
That, you know, I want to make that as user friendly as possible too, so.
Right.
Definitely want to explore those options and look at it.
But no, I think we can come up with some stuff, but anyway, um. I just got back from DC. We got back Saturday morning, um. I was just going to let you know, we went up there. Me is, myself, Margaret Byfield, Cliff Copeland with cattle growers, along with Michelle Frost, cattle growers and Jeff Decker. Ed and Patty Hughes and Susie Hutchinson, they went up there as landowners. As commissioners, Mr. Michael Perry, Ms. Jerry Rush, Mr. Red Miller. Red Miller's from Union County, Jerry Rush, Quay, Michael Perry's from Chavis. And then our New Mexico Associate County President, Cary County Clerk, Annie Hoggland. Uh, we, we flew in there the May fourteenth. And we went right to a meeting with Senator Ben Ray Lujan. We met with, uh, one of the senior policy advisors, Jonathan Black. And he shared with us a letter. And I did not know this was written, you, then y'all might have already known, but, uh, Mr. Mr. Ben Ray Lujan here had written a letter to Chris Wright. And I'll share this with y'all. It says, "I am writing to request that you offer my constituents in New Mexico more clarity and engagement on the national interest electric transmission corridor designation process. Specifically, I ask that you extend the deadline from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four and offer my constituents elected officials to public briefing and provide more clarity about the NETC process and any potential plans withdrawing private lands. There's been a great deal of confusion about what a NETC pro- NETC designation would mean, about how New Mexicans can participate in a process to voice their opinions about transmission need, transmission needs in eastern New Mexico. Many New Mexicans have come to my office concerned that the federal government plans to take rights away for up to fifteen miles wide in the proposed southwestern grid connecting corridor. My preliminary understanding of the NETC process is that this is a process to determine if transmission is needed in different parts of the United States, including Colorado, New Mexico and Oklahoma. And to no det- detrimentation, determination to build new transmission is being made. Unfortunately, my office has been unable to confirm this understanding or to engage directly with anyone from the Department of Energy on this issue because of the Trump administration's halt on any external engagements. This is something, this is unacceptable and must change immediately. Eastern New Mexico is populated by many ranchers, farmers and agricultural workers who provide or ties rural and quiet living. Some of these communities live off the electric grid or autonomous auto numbingly without any need or desire for new transmission projects through their property. Cattle ranchers depend on their land remaining undisturbed to ensure grass is available for grazing. They are all concerned about building transmission through their land that would not benefit them or their communities. Understanding the sense of nature of this issue, I urge you to take the following actions. Ensure that my office is given a direct contact to engage with the NETC process, extend the deadline for public comments, provide an opportunity for the public and elected officials in New Mexico to have a briefing and ask questions and provide more clarity about any potential plans for withdrawing private lands. Full transparency and active engagement on NETC process is needed to ensure the public has every opportunity to be informed and heard. Sincerely, Ben Ray Lujan." That was shared at that meeting and, uh, like I say, his senior policy advisor was well aware of our needs there. And he was very positive about this, about our needs, very positive. And I was glad to see that through Mr. With Ben Ray's, uh, Lujan's office there. Um, the next morning, we went to the Department of Energy to the Grid Development Office. We met with Joe Alexander, Chief of Staff, Tina Francone, a Senior Advisor, and Samuel Feely, Special Assistant. Uh. It was very positive. Did we get any answers? No, we didn't get no answers at all. But it's just like a lot during the public comments during the commission meeting, we were there giving our opinions and asking them to listen, and they did listen very openly in a very positive way. And so I have, I've got faith that we're doing something up there. And then at eleven o'clock that morning, we went up to the USDA Natural Resources and, and Environment Team. And we expressed our concerns with this NETC corridor deal going through our prey lesser prey chicken preserve down in the southern part of the county. Uh, and they were very receptive. And matter of fact, they didn't realize it was going to go through there. And so we opened up their eyes through that. And so then again, it was very positive. Cause you know, when we left there, I was, I was pumped. Uh. When we left that meeting and anyway, and then later on at two, two o'clock, we met with, uh, Congressman Jody Arrington and Sean McGauley. He's a legislative assistant meeting Congressman, Congressman Jody Arrant, uh, Congressman Jody Arrington is over in Texas, station, uh, his district is there at Lubbock in the Panhandle. Um. We talked to him mainly about the wildlife, the Mule Shoe Wildlife, uh, Refuge Expansion and how it's getting stopped. And so it was very positive. And then we informed him about this and, and we informed him about the Centennial Landscape itself. I'd be coming in there. Um. And then the, my and Annie's flight, we leave out, we were trying to leave out on May fifteenth there at three o'clock. We sat on the plane out there on the tarmac for three hours, three and a half hours with no, with no air conditioner. And they finally unloaded us in that little terminal. There was six airplanes that unloaded at the same time and there was eight, eight gates waiting to board other planes. And I'm telling you, we had to try to get rerouted out of there and I had to spend an extra night. Thankfully, our counterparts from New Mexico cattle growers still had the rooms. So we went back to our motel and, uh, we got flights out the next morning at eleven o'clock. Uh, but we did go to, uh, we, we got up and we did that and, uh, and we did go that mo- I guess early that morning, we had a meeting. We did have a meeting with the House Committee of Natural Resources in the, uh, in the USDA. And, uh, we talked to them, opened their eyes to the, to the NETC corridor, but I, they also brought up the screw worm threat that's coming up from, uh, Central America. And concerns about the wildlife corridor bringing that worm in here on the wildlife. And that's a concern cause their wildlife corridor, the wildlife down there don't know Mexico from Texas or Mexico from, uh, New Mexico down there. So they can't read the signs and they're going to keep across and, and so it's, uh, like I said, opened up their eyes to that, you know, to that and they, and they were already on it. And so, uh, like I say, we, uh, we come back and I'm very positive. We had a very positive three, you know, two and a half days up there and I was, uh, we're going to let's see what, how the prob- we're going to trust the process for a little bit and have faith. And I'm glad we got, got up there and glad I went, but voiced our concerns for y'all. And maybe we're hoping here in the next couple of weeks or month, thirty days, we have some answers. And if not, we'll do it again, I guess. So, and I appreciate the opportunity for y'all letting us, letting me go up there. So. But it was a busy two and a half days. So thank y'all.
Thank you for going.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, y'all are welcome. All right, let's move on to new business. Uh, six A, Discussion and Consideration of Budgetary Options for Safety Committee. Tasha Gressel.
Hello, uh, my name's Tasha Gressel. I am an employee in the Assessor's Office. I'm also the chairperson of the Safety Committee for Roosevelt County. Um, I wanted to talk with you guys tonight about the possibility, um, of getting a Safety Committee budget going. The Safety Committee, we meet once a month on the third Thursday of every month at ten AM here in the Commission Room. Um, we discuss, we discuss safety hazards that we've noticed throughout the month at our respective locations. Um, every department of the county, including District Court, has a representative on the committee. Um, we discuss, like I said, uh, safety concerns that we've noticed throughout the month. Um, we come up with a lot of great ideas to kind of mitigate some hazards. Um, unfortunately, a lot of those ideas, um, tend to not come to fruition, um, because we just don't have the funds to accomplish these ideas and not that they're ever super expensive. Um, there's just some gray area of where, when you buy things for the courthouse, for all of these departments, whose budget does that money come out of? Whose P card is getting charged on Amazon, that kind of thing. Um, when it comes to the detention center or the road department, you know, they have a fund for their department and their facility. And so it's easy for them to say if they need something, they can, they can purchase it from their budget. Um, so I just kind of wanted to discuss with you guys some options. I don't know if that would be a separate account for the Safety Committee, if it would be just a line item budget through admin or how to go about that. Um, I included in the packet for you guys some minutes from our meetings, just some things we've been discussing, we've been discussing for months. Again, we can't really get anywhere without the funds to buy these things. Um, our main concern right now and why I wanted to come up with this budget. I don't know if you're aware, but the courthouse doesn't have a fire alarm system. Um, it's a historical building. It's been grandfathered in that it's not a requirement for the historical building. Our current system is just an air horn blowing when we have fire drills. Somebody from the clerk's office will blow the air horn for the second floor. For the county offices, we have an intercom pager on our phone. And we do that and we say, you know, fire drill, or if it's an actual fire, I'm sure we'll, you know, fire, get out, that kind of thing. Um. So we have one air horn, or we did have one air horn um, that we've had for several years. There's no telling how much air is left in it. Um, we have, the goal of the Safety Committee is to have a fire drill once every quarter. Um, so we're going to need a new air horn to hopefully fulfill those fire drills. Um, we had originally thought that we could get, they have some wireless fire alarm systems that go through wifi or through Bluetooth and they connect together. Um, but I had heard that our county manager was in discussion with District Court to get some grants to get an actual fire alarm system in the building, which would be fantastic. So the biggest um, most expensive item would have been the wireless fire alarms, but it doesn't sound like we're going to need those. So, um, like I said, we'll need air horns pretty soon. And again, they're, um, in your packet, I had wrote. It's about forty-three dollars for a pack of six air horns. Um, we had also discussed the need for some better handicap parking signage to kind of direct the public to where the elevator is. Um, we noticed especially in the Assessor's Office and especially during tax time or voting time, we have a lot of older people struggling to get up these steps right here. And of course, by the time we see them, they're already in the building. They've already walked up the steps and they're like, man, you guys don't have an elevator. We tell them, yeah, it's around this side, but they've already made their way up the steps. They've already parked right here. It doesn't make sense for them to go back down and park around and use the elevator. So I think if we had some better signage at these two, um, entrances, just saying, you know, handicap parking this way, we were thinking one in English, one in Spanish. Um. Juan said he would get a quote from the guys that do their signage. Uh, he hasn't received a quote back yet. But he did say, um, looking at past, um, expense reports or, um, POs, I guess, that a twelve by eighteen sign was about twenty dollars. So if he wanted a twenty-four by twenty-four, he thinks thirty dollars a sign would, would suffice. And then, um, the county is required to do active shooter trainings once every two years. And we do our active shooter trainings and we discuss, you know, how we did and things that we think could help in that sort of situation. And for several years, we've been discussing emergency doorstops. Um, the kind we were talking about are just these poles that you stick under the, the doorknob that prevent it from opening. Um, and I also put in our packet, it's, I found for a pack of two would be thirty-six dollars. Um, and we would need, I think in our minutes, we wrote, there's fifty-four doors, but I'm pretty sure there's forty, um, exterior doors of their offices that we would like, uh, doorstops for. And so I think just a modest, and there's other things that come up throughout the year. I put on here, um, you know, one person in each department is required to be certified in CPR. Um, I took a CPR class at the detention center and the detention center, of course, had masks for their, um, officers. So I think if we could have at least one kind of mask for CPR purposes per office and then for each vehicle, so maybe the Explorer, if it's a courthouse vehicle and then each for our one, one for each of our two assessor pickups. Um, so I think altogether I came up with about, about thirteen hundred dollars. I have thirteen, eighteen um, in our total here. So I would just ask that you guys consider that. Any questions?
I have one. Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Tina's asking a question.
I heard her. Wait just a minute, Tina Maylin was already asking a question.
Okay, that's fine.
I was just curious, do you have a recommendation on how you want to do that?
I think it would. I think it would be great if the safety committee kind of had their own, um, P card is kind of all I know in the assessor's office. Um, we have a P card where we order office supplies and things like that. So I think if we had one for the safety committee and if we vote as a committee that we need something um, for the county, then we can make that purchase, I think would be great. Um, that would be my suggestion.
Follow up with that, did you? I don't remember seeing anything from the safety committee in any of the budget stuff.
Mm-mm. No, the safety committee has never had their own budget.
So my suggestion is that we just add a line item to each department because each department is going to require different items. Um, some are gonna be the same, some are not. Um, just as court, we can't purchase items for court and they'll be purchasing their own as well. So again, uh, just like the doorstops that she's talking about, some of those will work for some doors and some of them will not work for others, just like this handle right here. One of the ones she's talking about, this is a round knob. If you go up on the third floor, all of ours have the, uh, they have a lever. And those doorstops aren't gonna work for our, any of our doors because you can push down or pull up on those and that's not gonna make a difference. So.
I see what you're saying, but I also understand what she's saying as to the confusion of, okay, who's do we pull? What out of whose budget too?
Mm-hmm. At it, so like she's talking about with their trucks, so they need specialty safety items just as Rhodes does. If Rhodes has a safety budget, we can do the same for them. And that way we can make sure that whatever safety items they need for their department or they feel that they need, we're not restricting them from buying those items. Then they can buy them to make sure that they have everything that they need, just like they do their office supplies.
Ms. Chair?
Sorry, had to yawn me again. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Does, um, and I like what you're doing, so thank you, Tasha. Um, does any of this, since it's, um, safety or whatever, would any of this come out of Johnny's budget? Would that not be something that would come out of Johnny's budget? That's my first question.
And that I think is saying the signs might, might come out of Johnny's budget.
So what I would suggest is probably the signs that she's talking about for the elevator should come out of ADA.
Okay, and then the signs for the front, the handicap signs, is she talking about in the parking lot, those could come out of road department?
Well, they can come out of ADA, as long as they're handicap signs, they should come out of the ADA budget.
Okay, and Tasha, who all is on, I know you told me and I apologize. Who all did you say was on this committee with you?
Um, as individuals or departments?
No, departments.
So it's, um, the road department, um, the rural addressing and GIS department, the county clerk, the treasurer's office, the assessor's office.
Perfect, that's good.
Um, we have the detention center is on there and then we have a representative, a representative from district court that comes. And then sheriff and maintenance also.
Okay, so if we make you a budget, then you guys are gonna vote, even if it's individual, like the detention center needed X things, y'all would vote collectively to say, yes, we're gonna put this there and use it out of your budget fund. So what you're asking for is just to make you a budget so that you can distribute it however your whole committee votes to do it, correct?
Yes.
Well, I'm all about doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I say something, Mr. Chair?
Yes. I think it'd make more sense for each department to buy their own things because they're gonna have different necessities, right? Unless y'all agree to buy like a lot of the same thing, like those face masks you're talking about.
Right. So, and that's, that's the thing. Um, a lot of times if you buy in bulk, you get a cheaper price. And so I don't know behind the scenes, you know, if the assessor's office purchases all of these things. Um, does the assessor's office get paid back? Cause I don't know that our office supplies comes out of the general fund. I think a lot of that, we have a separate reappraisal fund. So I don't know how that would look logistically.
So I can answer that for you. And, and again, it goes back to the fact of having a separate P card, just because you have a P card doesn't mean that it's not tied to certain accounts. We split up everybody's according to accounts. That's why I suggest that we go back to accounts. Um, we can separate, we can buy in bulk and we have, just as we have with paper. And we split that up according to whose office is needing so much paper. We can do the same thing with the supplies. We can do it by percentage if that's what we have to. It's, it's just a matter of, I mean, it's, it's just a finance issue.
Well, so why would we, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, so if we're gonna divide it up and each department's gonna do their own, then what is the point in having the committee? I guess I'm just missing that. So if somebody could explain to me, what's the point in having the committee? If we're gonna just break it up and each department's gonna do their own budget, because I would think like if we're gonna do fire alarms or any kind of thing, we would want it to be collectively and we would want them all to interlink so that everybody's on the same thing, not different things in different departments. So I'm just curious to know why we have a committee if we're gonna do individual departments.
Mr. Parker?
I'm cheering, just like coming from a former department head, elected official, office head, that it's better to have outside eyes looking in because you don't always see the things in your office every day. So I can definitely see the, the need for a committee. And I can also see what Annette's saying, the county manager's saying in regards to breaking it down that way too. So that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you.
So how long has this safety committee been in, in play?
So it's been well before me. Um, I've been here going on eleven years now. Um, I think it's, George said he was on it when he was an employee years ago. My understanding, it's been a requirement for insurance purposes, for like a risk management. We get a cheaper rate if we have a safety committee. So we've been having the committee for years. Um, and like I said, we've always had, and I just, I just have been on it for about a year now, but they've always had great ideas and they all kind of fall short because we don't know, like, do air horns count as office supplies? I don't know what auditors look at specifically to say, why are you buying, you know, CPR masks as an office supply? So I mean, if we needed to do um, a line item for each office or each department to have a safety budget, I think that's fine. Um, and these instances, those can absolutely be, um, you know, each, if you have four doors, go buy four stoppers if you wanted to. Um, sometimes things come up, but it seems like it would be an easy thing to, you know, split it up and kind of charge each department their bit if we wanted to go about that. Um, I would just like to see some of these things get accomplished if we had the money to do so.
All right. I know, uh, of my two years being here, this is the first I've heard of this safety committee. So I don't recall another safety, you know, that's been brought up in a
Right.
meeting. But anyway, I see you don't hear that y'all were addressing like the steps.
Mm-hmm.
And I was thinking that, I mean, well, first I'm gonna back up to the doors. And aren't we supposed to replace like the front doors of the courthouse? Isn't that supposed to be one of those projects? It's supposed to be coming, yeah.
Can I join in this conversation? For, um, a lot of years, um, the safety committee has met and has brought these things and they bring these things to the commission one at a time, like the issue with the elevator, with the issue with the doors, with the issue with the, uh, um, caps on the steps. All of those things come one at a time as an issue is addressed when it's too big for each department. But a lot of departments do already have a safety line item, like PPE at the sheriff's office and detention and that kind of thing. But not all departments do because we don't need PPE necessarily in my office, but we buy our stuff to replenish our first aid kit and that kind of thing out of our office supplies budget. We probably need a safety line for every department, so it's consistent across departments for finance. Um, but the committee brings recommendations to admin and admin brings to commission. Um, but the committee has always brought these things and they've always fallen short of being funded because they come to the commission one time and they said, we need a new elevator and it takes two years to find a grant and two more years to get it done. You know, that kind of thing just moves real slow. If there was a finance, a, a budget set aside for safety for the minor things, then they could happen a lot faster.
Another question I have, with that all being said, why wasn't this brought before us during the budget meetings that we had?
I, I had requested a meeting with the county manager. Um, I sent two different emails asking to meet with her and I hadn't perceived a response. And so I went, um, to Mary, um, a few weeks ago and we talked about it and she suggested maybe just coming to you guys directly and that's why we're here.
Okay, I just, I just know that every department was here during the budget meetings and we didn't hear nothing. Nothing was ever said about any of this. So that, I just want to throw that in into this conversation. I'm not disagreeing with the, I am not, I'm not disagreeing with none of this, but I'm just saying, I think it would have been nice a month ago, whenever we had our, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, three weeks ago, we had our budget meetings that this could have been brought up then, and then we could have worked on it during our budget workshop and maybe got it put in our budgets for something like this.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table this until the, uh, thirtieth meeting or our budget hearings where we can readdress it and, and possibly work that into the final budget.
I second.
Okay, we have a, a motion has been made to table this till the May thirtieth to the budget meeting and we have a second. Chair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Shredder, yes.
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 And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. That's, uh, six B, discussion and consideration of policy changes and amendments to the Roosevelt County Personnel Ordinance, Section Nine Compensation and Benefit Program. Ms. Mary?
Well, I can start by saying I am ready to discuss it if we choose, but what I would like to propose is that instead of us taking each section one by one, that we elect a committee. Because this is going to take forever to get this done at any type of meeting in the evenings or during the day. Just this one alone is going to take probably a couple hours by the time we're done discussing. So my thought is that we take a couple of commissioners, um, some department heads, some different people, make a small committee of seven or eight people and sit down once a week, once every two weeks and go through it and get it done. But if we want to discuss it tonight, we could do that.
Chair? You have any discussion?
Yes, I do, because I, as I agree that it's gonna take a while, but I think that if we're going to discuss it, I think it needs to be the commissioners. With all due respect, every department has their own policies and procedures within their own department. As far as the policies and procedures for Roosevelt County, that is the job of the Board of Commissioners to create that policy and we need to do it together as a commission. That's just my thought.
Anybody else?
I'm available the thirtieth for it.
Hate to say it, but I agree with you. That's, that's definitely what our job is. But I also don't think a public meeting is the time and the place to sit down and try to hammer this out for hours either. We need to. My suggestion would be to have an assignment of ordinance, section nine compensations and benefit program and we take it back and we make our, each individual changes to it, then we discuss our changes in the next meeting and try to have our revisions made and see what we can come up with and just see what is the fastest procedure that we're reporting and most accurate to make sure that we all get what we want and what's best appropriate accounting in those policies.
Commissioner Parker, were you talking to the microphone? Cause I can't hear a dead gum words you're saying.
I can't remember everything I said, so. This is my suggestion that can you hear me now, Chair?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
It's my suggestion that we have more or less an assignment, take this back, make our changes individually and then come back instead of trying to hash these out in a public meeting all at once. Cause I agree with Mary, if we start tearing this apart right now, we're gonna be on it for the next couple of hours. Um, we need to figure out a more efficient way of doing this. But I'm all open for suggestions and I'll do whatever is a pleasure of the rest of the commission.
I'd like to make a motion to table it if we could and bring it back at the next meeting. But go ahead and take the, um, section nine or whatever working on now, everybody make your amendments and just discuss that one section at the next meeting.
There's been a motion and a second to put the discussion of ordinance, section nine compensation benefit program on the table until the next commission meeting. How do you vote, Chair?
Regular?
Yes.
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 Clarification, the next regular commission meeting, yes.
Yes.
Now, Commissioner, just to point a clarification, uh, at that meeting, you won't be able to vote on that change as a change that will be taking place. You will only be able to vote on basically directing the manager and the clerk to publish that. And then it will take a public hearing two weeks later and be effective thirty days after that. So, you know, it's you know, so if, if you really wanna do the most expedient way, you would take this and assign a, a small subcommittee of the commission to work through large swaths of this at one time and bring them back at one time rather than doing a section by section, cause if you do one section, basically you're gonna be doing one section a month and that will take you forever. So if, you know, I didn't, I hes- I was hesitant to suggest that, but, cause it's not really my place, but I, it is more expedient to do it that way.
That's your job. Thank you.
We revamped the sheriff's office policy when I took over and it took us almost four years to get that entire policy rewritten. So it's, it's a nightmare for sure.
That's just a discussion of this. Does this will need to be reinvented?
Oh, yeah, it just, with all due respect, gentlemen and lady, this, this policy needs some work.
Okay. I was hoping just a spoke replaced.
More than one.
Okay. Let's move on. Let's move on. Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Mr. Van Black, what's the, what's the uh? Chances of getting recommendation by council on this as well? Cause before I, I wanted to, before I want to go in here and start red inked stuff, I'd like to have your. Input as to what you would recommend as well.
Well, I mean, that's, Commissioner, uh, that's exactly my point. If you want, you know, legal involved, you know, it's probably better. To rather to, to just take large swaths of it, have, have recurring committee meetings. You know, because I, out of town, I can do those by Zoom or by, by, you know, whatever platform you want to use. Um, and you know, by taking bigger pieces of it at a time, uh, you know, I could be more actively involved. But yeah, I mean, absolutely. I'll do it whatever you, I'll do it however you want to do it. But you know, I would like to be. I, I think it'd be beneficial for, for my input as well.
I sure agree with him being actively involved with this.
I do too. With all due respect, I just don't want you to over attorney it either. That makes sense to you. And I'm not saying that to be insultive at all, but.
No, I understand.
See how some, some attorneys might really. Restrict a lot more than needs to be restricted, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I, no, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioner, I, I fully understand that. Uh, I will say in the defense of my profession and my colleagues. These are complicated documents with complicated issues. Uh, and you know, we need to cover. As many of those as possible because uh. There are always people out there who are creative in finding loopholes or finding missing holes and. So that's why sometimes these documents are, are lengthy and, and. You know, perhaps a little over lawyered.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's move on. Seven A, request for the approval of the contract with Apex Solutions Incorporated. And the Roosevelt County Detention Center for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty-six.
This is the same contract from last meeting. There is no change. There is not a separate contract for sheriffs. They, we just get a bill regarding just that. It has more to do with the fact that detentions has a bigger facility.
Maybe we approve seven eight.
Second.
It has been moved and second to approve, request for the approval of the contract with Apex Solutions. Ms. Chair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Righter.
Yes.
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 It has been, and it passes. Seven B, request for approval for the D W I grant award agreement. Number twenty-six DG dash twenty-three with the Department of Finance and Administration, local government division. For a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Dollar read.
This is the simplest thing for you tonight. All you have to do is just approve it. It's already been uh, awarded. And this is just the agreement.
Motion number two, second.
It has been, we've made a motion and, and second. Righter.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate all the things you guys do. This is a headache, I know, but appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to go in executive session? To pursue the ten dash fifteen dash one N M S A nineteen seventy-eight H. Two Attorney Client Privilege Information pertaining to the threat or pending litigation, specifically. Yacena Remadas and McGill Mendita versus Roosevelt County, Ignacio Gallegos versus Roosevelt County. And contracts and or limited personnel matters pertaining to finance, H R and manager as needed.
I shall move.
We've had a motion, we've had a motion and second. How do you vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Roll call?
Roll call.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Righter.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank y'all.
Carol? It's good seeing you, Carol.
Carol, it was real good to see you.
Think so.
See you later. You're looking great. You have, you're getting younger on your retirement.
And thank you, Commissioner.
Who is required to stay?
Start a tractor or something. Okay, appreciate it.
Well, we need the lawyer.
I'll get you five.
I'm here.
Yeah, but who else is staying?
Yeah, I'll have to do.
Uh, I need everyone, that's uh. Right now, I want to, let's uh, I want, we need finance. And lawyer in here first, please.
We don't have finance.
Talk about litigation. Or not finance, but manager, we need our manager and the lawyer to talk about litigation. I guess.
Somebody call my cell phone. I'm going upstairs.
It won't be that.
I wouldn't go long. I wouldn't go far. If you go up the stairs, it'd be from going down to back up here.
It'll take the elevator longer, that's.
It will.
So are we off?
Oh, I didn't get the YouTube live work.
Alright, so we're, we've got. And we're going to discuss the uh.
I guess and turn it off.
Thank you.
You put it on the speakerphone?
Yeah.
Right here? How do you offer it?
Got it, right here.